All right, this meeting is called to order at six o'clock. We'll have our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
It's trustee Martin.
Here in Van Buren Township.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Frazier. Here in beautiful Van Buren Township.
Trustee Boynton.
Here in Van Buren Township and currently working on my camera.
Treasure Bud.
Here in Van Buren Township.
Clerk is also here in Van Buren Township. Supervisor McNair.
Here in Van Buren Township.
We have a Van Buren corn.
So the executive summary, there'll be an amendment of the board agenda for tonight. Among two of the things will be, the first one is I have a notice from Rajee Puri, who was going to come and give us a legislative update. He can't make, he is still in session right now. And the other one would be that we're going to be adding an IT position for network administrator as line item number four. Today's consent agenda consists of our work study session meeting minutes, our closed session meeting minutes, our board meeting minutes, our prepaid lists, our voucher list, which is paying our day-to-day bills, and also our annual Wayne County right-of-way permit. It's a permit that allows us to work on the side of the road where we have to work all year long rather than getting one for each time we go out. There'll be a public hearing today regarding our 2021 amended and our 2022 proposed budget. This is a time for the public to speak on this budget. It's not a board time speaking of this for the public. There will be an informational presentation on the interior floor plan of the proposed community center. We're going to see the community center here tonight, proposed. And there'll be new business which will include discussion of selection of American interiors to complete a mailroom renovation. And also discussion amendments to the communications, the IT, the community services, the public services, and the treasury budgets. Discussion on a job description for a personal service agreement between the township and Todd Soms. We found a position, we found a water and sewer director. These are the budget, there also will be some budgetary reports from May and August that will be added on to the thing. So we're moving straight on through, and I'm at adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the revised agenda, adding in line item number four, which would be a personal service agreement for a network administrator?
Support.
Okay, I got support. I got, yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as prevented with the addition.
Thank you, and we have support by trustee Frazier. Hearing no discussion on this item. Clerk Wright, could you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Martin made the motion. Trustee Martin?
Martin Frazier.
Yes. Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Boynton.
Yes.
Yes, for me, Treasure Bud.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are now to the adoption of the consent agenda. Trustee Miller, could you please take that?
Yes, adoption of the consent agenda includes, number one, work-study session meeting minutes of October 4th, 2021. Two, closed session meeting minutes of October 4th, 2021. Three, board meeting minutes of October 5th, 2021. Four, prepaid list of October 7th, 2021. Five, prepaid list of October 14th, 2021. Six, backlist of October 19th, 2021. Seven, approval of resolution 2021-26, annual Wayne County right-of-way permit.
Support.
Ms. Bud, Treasure Bud?
Yes.
All right, is there any discussion out of this? Hearing none. Clerk Wright, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Betty Bud.
Yes.
Trustee Boynton.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Yes, really clerk Wright?
Hey.
Yes.
There we go.
Trustee Boynton. Okay. Okay, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and just for the public's knowledge, it's called a consent agenda because it's pretty much stuff that we always agree to consent on because it pays our bills, like our Edison or gas, things like that.
Housekeeping.
Yeah, exactly. All right, we're moving on now to a public hearing. This is a public hearing, doesn't take a motion to go into. I did look that up. This is a public hearing to receive public comment on our 2021 amended budget and our 2022 new budget. It is, if there's any, I'm going to hand this over to the moderator. And moderator, do you have anybody wishing to speak on either of those budgets? I am going to throw you a softball, too. The museum is in the budget. If you want to talk about the museum, it's in here. Okay, so.
This is where you would speak about items such as that.
Yes.
Right.
So if you're a member of the public, if you could use your raising hand function, if you would like to address the board during the public hearing for any of the budgetary items.
I think I saw our past director in there.
Diane Wilson, hi, do you want to speak on any of these agenda items?
Well, I do. I would like to speak about the museum, but I don't know the plans for the museum yet.
Okay, I will answer that because I've answered it before, and the board has proved the way I answered the last one, so I'll answer. The museum, right now, we don't know what the future, we don't know the direction that we want to take on the museum. We do know that we want to open up a public comment of it. We want to bring it to the public. We want their input. We want to have a townhouse on it. So we're going to have everybody come out and say what they want to do with the museum and how they want us to do it. We are not going to decide that without the public having input on it. And so it's not that we're closing it. Right now, we're closing it because it's just, it's, we've got to decide what we're going to do for the future. And if, but that's where we're at. Nothing's decided.
Well, when will this hearing be held?
My hope was going to be that it would be held before the end of the year, that we would start taking comment. I'd say worst-case scenario would be January, and the only reason we get into that is just because we're having such a huge turnover here right now in so many key positions. So we're having trouble moving forward with it right now. But yeah, I'd say by January, we will have all that.
Supervisor, it wouldn't be a hearing, would it? It would be just an agenda item, correct?
Well, okay, so what we have always done, we've adapted what's called the redevelopment-ready community system, and we've done it on everything we've ever done here. We basically, we put it out to the community, say, hey, you want to comment on it, comment on it? We're going to have an open house. We have an open house. They come in, tell us what they want. We show them some ideas that we might have. Then the board gets together, takes those ideas, and tries to develop a vision for it. And then at finality is, we put that together and we present it to the public and the board.
Okay.
With the chair.
Yeah.
Actually, it would be, it would be a good reason to have a board work study for the public to come in and talk about what they would like to see and then, I mean, that's what works, that's what the work studies are meant to be. Especially for the purposes of things like that, so.
I've already heard from the city of Belleville, they want to continue on with the museum and the city of township of Sumter, so they want to continue on. The Sumter has pledged that they, you know, additional support in many ways, if they can help out. So, you know, it's something, I don't see it going away, but on the other side, it's just not working the way it's going right now.
And why is that? Why is it not working now?
Well, the attendance is not, it's not open half the time. The attendance isn't there. There's no real programming going on for bringing people and increasing attendance, or at least getting people into it. There's no tie-in really to the schools like there was before, a long time ago. It's just, it's not, it's, it needs a vision, and it doesn't seem to have one.
I thought the museum was closed because of COVID.
That's a big reason why it's closed.
And so that's why admissions are down.
That's true, and so it's a good time to figure out what we're going to do going forward.
And what is the status of Director Katie Dallas?
She's currently, actually, we don't comment on those things, but since it's already been announced on social media, she's currently laid off.
And is that temporary?
I don't know what the vision going forward is going to be.
I see. Well, I just have to say that if this historical building is lost to the community, that would be a gigantic loss. And for it not to be used as a museum would be an abomination.
We support the museum. We don't want to see it shut down permanently. Nobody on the board does.
No.
I don't, I don't, I don't see the building going away. I don't see us losing any property.
We're putting in probably close to $200,000. We're putting in 200, almost $200,000 worth of upgrades to that building right now as we speak.
Right.
And we did a whole bunch last year and a whole bunch the year before that. So we're not trying to kill off the building either. In fact, we're trying to save the building right now.
Well, that's good news. I guess I just don't see why it has to be closed during this time. And the director had all kinds of activities planned for the Harvest Fest and for the holidays, when we always host the Festival of Trees. So I can't really say that this should be placed on her about the lack of admissions.
We have to get, we have to get a vision. We have to get, we have to, we have to come up with one focused vision and follow through to the end.
Well, I think that's a good idea, but why does it have to be closed during that time?
It hasn't been open for a long time, and we've been trying to open it, and we can never seem to get any hours set. We never, it just goes back and forth that way. I mean, you know, the lowest rung on a museum is it's got to have some hours that's open. We can't even seem to get that.
The public has to know that it's available for them to go in there and take a look, and that's been lacking, unfortunately.
I don't see it going away. Trustee Martin.
Order through the chair. This is a public comment. Time is not, this is a public hearing. It's not time for board comments. Just stay on track, please.
Yeah, I was just about to say that, trustee Martin.
Director, I really, I really can't go into any more than what I've gone into. But I, which I think you've heard that the board, and I work for the board, they're not letting that museum go away, and we've been dumping a lot of money into it.
Okay, well, I just want you to know that the museum is very precious to the community.
Yeah, I agree.
And I hope that will be included in the vision.
Yeah, Ms. Wilson, it's still, the museum is still, like we, as you can see, is a budget here, and it's still a budget item. It's right there, Belleville Museum. It's still there, we're still going to fund it. It just, we're just trying to figure out what's the right direction to move forward there, based on the vision that the board is looking at. So not going anywhere. We dumped, like the supervisor said, we're putting a lot of money into it. Hopefully, we wouldn't be wasting money or putting money into it that we're going to close, get rid of it. It's not going anywhere. Still funding, going to continue to be funded. Just need to see what's the right direction to go. And that's part, and other than that, we can't discuss any personnel issues, but we can discuss the budget.
Well, thank you, and I wish you the best of luck with your efforts.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else, narrator?
I'm not seeing any virtual hands, so I will give it a minute, though. So any tenants from the public, you're able to use your virtual hand-raising option, or you may use the chat option if you would like to make any public comment on the public hearing for budgetary items at this time. I see one hand raised right now, and it is from Claudia, which I'm going to unmute you.
Okay, I used to work at the museum as a volunteer, and it was my understanding that there was a grant out for connecting the old fire hall to the museum, and we were granted that grant. So I was just wondering if that was going to be done.
The grant is in the budget, and it's a $25,000 grant. Van Buren Township is kicking in an additional $150,000 to complete that interior, that connection piece and to do the landscaping around the building.
And when does that start?
I just signed paperwork to extend the grant with the state of Michigan, but we have already ordered the steel and I believe most of the windows, which is a big hunk of the project. So we're more than a little bit already into this. We can't get out now. We wouldn't want to, but we could, we, you know, we can't.
I would hope that you wouldn't.
No, we ordered the steel.
All right, it's going to be fun to watch it progress. I just hope that most of the people in our area realize what a value we have in that building and in the director that's now laid off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Claudia. Are there any other members of the public using your hand-raising feature that would like to make any public comment during the public hearing during the budget? Chairman, I'm not seeing any other hands raising at this moment, and I'm not seeing any other comments made in the chat at this moment.
Okay.
Give it an extra minute.
To the chair.
To the chair.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing to receive comment on the budgets.
Actually, I don't need a motion. I actually looked it up. I thought I did, but I can close it right off, and I believe that it's time.
Okay.
We're going to close the public hearing. All right, public hearing is closed. We're going to move into correspondence, announcements, and presentations. This is a little bit of a sad note, a call for a slight moment of silence here. Kevin Boyer, he used to be a member of our Board of Review. He passed away yesterday. It's a sad day. He's 20-year resident, a very, very, he's gotten around. Everybody knew Kevin Boyer. He was also the former Dearborn Fire Chief. He was a 20-year resident, and he will be missed, and I'm very sorry to hear that. So let's just take a moment to say goodbye to Kevin. Okay, next thing I'm going to see, I have Rajee.
Supervisor, you've unmuted yourself, but we do, but I'm able to hear you from where I'm at, and Director Zhang Lang is available.
Okay, Jeff, take it over, Jennifer.
I'm coming to you live from the costume drive. Look, there's a shark. So I'm just here tonight to remind everyone that we do have a costume drive going on. It started on Monday. It's going to go through this week as long as we have costumes, okay? So I'm here at the senior dining hall. We're asking people to park outside of Parks and Rec, and then from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. each night, we have costumes. So this was our second night doing this. We've given away about 45 costumes, and I'm not kidding, I have 100 costumes left. So we've got some infant costumes. I have a lot of costumes for kids, like kind of, I would say, sizes four through 12, and I have a few adult costumes. I really hope that people stop by, take advantage. This is your community at work. We've had costumes donated by our residents, by the Rotary, by the Kiwanis. Keystone Academy has donated some really cool trick-or-treat buckets, so please stop by and see us. And what we're doing, we're getting all dressed up for Candy Loop. Candy Loop is going to be this Saturday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Quark Park, which is directly behind Township Hall. I hope you guys come out. I hope you have a lot of fun, and please stop by and say hi to your friends here at Parks and Rec. If you have any questions, give us a call, 734-699-8921. That's all I got.
Thank you. Narrator, is Joel out there?
Do not see, okay, this was Sabina's unattended, but his director is out here, though.
Well, first of all, Joel Saban is about to leave us. He's been here for six and a half years. He ran G.I. Ass here. I didn't understand what G.I. Ass was. Basically, it allows you to global position things and get everything done. Now, I'm more, the more I've discovered, the more I realize how important Joel was. He allowed our water and sewer department to run with a lot less people than a lot of people's water and sewer departments because of the fact that they just had so much information when they were out there, scheduling, they knew where everything was, they could pinpoint it, it wasn't searching. Joel's, Joel's, Joel's comedian from Jackson, so he's pretty happy he's going to be working from home in the future. We'll miss Joel.
Tell him to move.
Yeah.
Tell him to move to Van Buren.
Well, Joel's, Joel's an IT, IT tech head. He enjoys sitting in his house and working on his computer. Is Matt Best there?
Former Director Best is as a panelist.
Director Best. Okay, so this is Director Best's farewell, so I'm going to tee it up here. First of all, I was blessed when I got Matt Best, and we, when I came through the door, and I wondered what a Wayne County drain guy knew about running DPS. I did not realize that his knowledge was in facilities and drains and drainage districts and roads and buildings and planning and sewer and environmental. The man is just a Swiss Army knife of knowledge, and it made him an extremely unique manager that could get a hold of almost any project that we gave him, and he could put together all the nuances and entrapments that most people get stuck in in these things, and he could figure out a way. But mostly, he built teams. He built an incredible team over there, recognized some great talent, figured out how to work with the people that he had. And I just, I was just sitting here thinking of you, Matt, and I was just thinking of all the wonderful things we did our first four years, and, I mean, it's amazing. We rebuilt the fire station one and fire station two, and I mean, when we talk about rebuild, it was electrical, it was mechanical, it was concrete, it was paint, it was structural steel, it was doors, it was just the water, the sewer. It was just amazing. We rebuilt the administration building in the same way, or you did, and your team. And then there was the police department, redid that entire thing. We redid their entire car facilities and our trucks and that stuff we got redone. We started on the park, we didn't get too far into it, but we got Van Buren Park, a new ski hill, a new pavilion, a new playscape, and a $500,000 new road from the front to the back. Started working on Riggs Park, did some work out there. French Landing, we got that beginning. You got it ripped up, and you got it tied up before you got out of here. You built McBride Road and quite a few other little road projects for us. And, and quite frankly, there's a multitude of projects that we're going to see over the next three months that took some of them two and three years to get designed, and they all started with Matt and his group, and we're going to miss you, Matt. So I'm going to give it to you. Thank you, Matt, for all your time.
Matt, don't leave us. Don't leave us. We need you.
Thank, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Want to thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for giving me the opportunity to work with the people that I got to work with every day, from the elected officials. Clerk, you have been a rock for me in teaching me really the right and wrong of government, and it's been amazing to watch, watch, be and be a leader. It, and giving me the guidance that I need on things that you're an expert in, and sometimes when you're, when you're not the expert, you still have great advice about how to proceed. So thank you very much. Treasure Bud, you will always be my treasurer. The treasure for Pittsfield isn't watching, so you will always be my treasurer, and you will always be my friend. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to grow here at Van Buren Township. If it wasn't for you, I would not have been able to do the things that I have done. You taught me how to really make a budget work and make, saving money for the township a reality, so. And your guidance on projects, and sometimes we didn't agree on the color schemes. However, I think it turned out, it's turned out pretty well. Trustee Frazier, I want to thank you very much for keeping me honest. Your call for transparency and asking me to go, to go the extra mile in explaining things makes me, made me a better government employee and a better speaker. Trustee, you are the definition of what I, as a resident, would want in a trustee. You keep doing what you're doing. Trustee, trustee Miller, thank you for your patience, your friendship, and your counsel. It might not have seemed like it at times in some of the meetings, but trustee Miller and I would always talk on the phone, and she would give, give me her take, and I would tell her my take, and we'd somehow come to the middle. And then whether we agreed or disagreed on meeting night, it didn't matter. We had all said what we were supposed to say, and the projects got done better because of it. Trustee Boynton, thank you for your friendship. If it wasn't for you, I wouldn't have worked an extra two years. You picked me up in a really, a time that I needed, I needed picking up, and you kept me going at the township, and I really want to thank you for that, and I'm glad that you're part of the team. Supervisor McNair, thank you for giving me the space to do my job and letting me grow and take chances. And you've done that with not just me, but with the other members of my team and the other members at the township. And without your leadership and this trust board of trustees, I couldn't do it. Finally, to my team that I, that I left, that I still, on Monday morning, wanted to, I pulled out my computer on Sunday night, getting ready to work for Monday, and I, and I was like, this isn't my computer. I have things, I forgot that I didn't work at the township anymore. I'm leaving behind some of the greatest people that I've ever worked with, and it comes from the board moving down to the team and the people that are at the township. Every single one of you at the township is fantastic. I can't ask for anything else, and I want to thank you also for this. This is going to go up my wall at the township so that they know where my, where my heart is every day, and I will watch and keep an eye on everything, and if you need me, I'm just a phone call away. Thank you so much for everything.
It's not too late, Matt. It's not too late.
Oh.
We'll miss you.
Yeah, we are, you know, it's amazing, he rose to be first among, I call them first among equals because they were all directors, but everybody knew that Matt was running the show, and Matt, and, and quite frankly, I was shocked when I had two, two directors come to me and say, we want Matt to be our boss. So that's, you know, that shows you how. So that's, you know, that's, that shows you how, um, how good a guy Matt is, so.
Still shocked that happened.
I am too. Directors usually haven't got the ego to ask somebody to be their boss. Um, well, I thank you very much. Does anybody else want to say anything? Click right, you're on mute. Click right, you're muted.
I gotta unmute myself. Uh, Director Best, we about, we already had, we had a couple of brief discussions already. I just want I know everybody, thank you as well. I had the pleasure along with Treasury Bud and Supervisor to, uh, work along with you every day. And like I told you always, you've always been above par and professional with me, and that's that's all, that's all I, I can, I ask from any director. I mentioned, I said the board, we had a great board that we could work well together, where we also have great directors and you led those directors in your what we call the fishbowl, and we did. We did a lot of good work in the last five, four, five years. We did more work in the last four years that I've done in my span of clerk. Which is good. It just shows what a, a functional board can do together when it's, when, when they're not playing politics. This is what we're supposed to do. This is what we get elected to do, and that's what, and this is what we're doing every day. I can truly sit here and say that I enjoy getting up in the morning time now. Putting on my clothes and coming to work because I know we're doing the work of the people and we're getting things done. And I, that's what it's all about. I wish you well in your endeavors, uh, I've always wished anybody opportunity to grow. I hope you grow even super fast than you are growing now. Uh, it's all about you and you got to do what's best for Matt Best and, and your family. So, uh, congratulations and keep up the good work.
Just to say, you will be missed.
It's not too late, Matt. It's not too late.
I don't think his employer will like that.
Steve Martin?
I'd just like to say, uh, Matt, when I heard the news that you were leaving, I, I was kind of devastated. I, I was, I was taken aback. And, and I have to thank you for, uh, leading this, leading this township along with, with the board and the direction that I envisioned seeing it when I was first elected, uh, as a trustee. You've been always, uh, frank and upfront with me and with, with the rest of the board with, you know, our matters, and I, I appreciate you greatly. You have been quite an asset, and I'm sure, uh, Pittsfield is lucky to have you. Thank you for all your hard work and good luck to you in the future.
It's not too late.
I, I'll, I'll thank you. I'll just, I'll say one more thing. The, the, the one person that uh, at the township still that I, I should thank is Elizabeth Renaud. She is the most amazing employee that, that the township has, and she is the, quite possibly the, the greatest administrator that I've had the pleasure to work with, and I've worked with a lot of great ones. And she might be the greatest administrator in the universe, to tell you the truth. On, uh, you have, you are treasured to have her, so thank you. I just had to say that, if I have a chance.
All right. Thank you very much, Matt. I just see you muted out and I don't know what else I can tell you. All right, we're gonna move on. Take care, Matt.
Best of luck.
Speaking of that, uh, lead-in, our next item is going to be Elizabeth Renaud, the greatest administrator in the universe.
That's pretty high.
Really send some high expectations here.
All right, so this is probably one of the most anticipated things of this year is the unveiling of the, uh, floor plan for the community center. So Director Renaud, could you take it away?
Absolutely. So the Community Center Project Team, we've been working diligently, um, to develop the schematic design package for the Van Buren Township Community Center that I'll be presenting today. Um, that project team is made up of countless township staff alongside our consultants. Uh, the township has partnered with Plant Moran Cressa as our owner's representative. Newman Smith Architecture is our architectural firm, and Frank Rewald and Sons as our construction manager. So again, I'm here tonight and happy, um, to share the schematic design with the Board of Trustees. So this design was presented at the Rec Committee last week on October twelfth. Um, once the board has, of trustees has had the opportunity to comment on the schematic design plan, uh, the project team will move into formal budgetary estimating in addition to completing detailed design documents that include the site work and also exterior design elements that aren't currently on this, um, schematic design sketch. And as of right now, we're still on target for breaking ground in spring of next year, twenty-twenty-two. So before we get into the actual design, I want to be clear that this is a schematic design. This doesn't mean that we're picking the color of the walls or the fixtures or picking out small details like that. It's more of an outline of the space that we use for budgetary purposes to make sure the project is moving in the right direction and on budget. So let's jump into it. I'm gonna share my screen. And for some reason, the greatest administrator of all time is having difficulties. Um, it's not the usual share screen button.
It always happens.
This is Matt's fault because he set these expectations too high. I'm not sure. Um, okay, give me one second.
I think you, whatever you were doing, you had it for a minute, Elizabeth, it went, it popped out. It just, it takes a couple of minutes to pop up.
Yeah, that was my second camera. Um, this isn't letting me share. I don't know, moderator, are you able to share?
Can you send it to the moderator and maybe he can put it up?
Yeah, give me one second. I might have to upload it to my.
I just made an adjustment. Why don't you try it now?
Okay. No, give me one second. I'm gonna have to upload it to a Google Drive account. One second. Sorry about that.
Okay. Well,
Go on to the new business and come back?
Can do that. I just have a feeling she's gonna be popping up that screen, but when she pops that screen up, we'll, we'll finish whatever we're in the middle of and we'll back. We're gonna move on to new business for right now, and while she works on that. The first item is discussion on to consider approval of the purchase and installation of American Interiors to do the mailroom renovations not to exceed twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Can I get a motion?
Supervisor, I make a motion on the discussion on and to consider approval of the purchase and installation for American Interiors to complete the mailroom renovations in the mountain, not exceed twenty-five, six, six, zero.
Support.
I, I, I heard many, uh, two phrases were up on that one. Uh, Mr. Cardenas, are you out there? Hugo? That you're on mute? Hugo is.
Afternoon or good evening, I guess.
Hugo's doing a great job, by the way, everybody.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Kevin. It, uh, so yeah, this is gonna be the renovation of the mailroom. Uh, original cost was four thousand, um, down to twenty-five, six, sixty. Um, I guess this is the final stage, like Matt said, as far as renovating the east side of the town hall. Um, it's gonna eliminate waste, uh, make it more streamlined, um, and make it a lot better overall. Um, does anybody have any questions? Um, yeah.
Through, through the chair, if I may ask, I, I hope that we'll still have our mailboxes, the trustee mailboxes.
Yes, yep. It, uh, it's gonna be, you're still gonna have everything, um, in the drawing on the east. Oh, I can't. That's scope of work. You see the eighteen mailbox slots, uh, where the new design is. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's gonna be really nice.
And how long will it take to complete?
Um, I'm assuming a few weeks, because we still got, there we go. We, building the ground's gonna have to take all the old cabinetry away. There you go. And, uh, we're gonna have to paint. Obviously, the floors, floors has already been done, so it's really just the cabinetry and the painting.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair, Hugo, if I'm not mistaken, it, if, if it didn't change, the schematic is gonna, gonna be, for the design is gonna be to to move the mailbox or so you won't get hit in the head when you open the door. Is that still correct? Right now, it's behind the door. When you open the door, he's, he's like, everybody's like, oops.
Yeah, they're gonna have a stall, hall storage there, uh, behind that door as well.
The mailbox, it won't be right behind the door when you open the door.
Great.
Correct.
It'll be out more open and open.
Yeah, it's gonna be on the left-hand side. The copier, when you walk in the mailroom, is gonna be on the far right side along that wall. We, we did the electrical already, so all we have to do is kind of just move the printer down to the other side and plug it in.
Great.
Looks good. It looks, looks good. I'm excited.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, Matt, once again, you did a great job on this, so it, uh, uh, all this is him. I'm just finishing the form. That's for sure.
Okay. Uh, is there any other questions? This represents one of the last areas that we have not done on the administration building, but there are little areas here and there that we will be going into now, so, okay.
You know, while we, while we, while we mentioned in, uh, design and re, reformation and redoing thing, I do always want to say, uh, Hugo came on board, running, doing a great job. He has brought stuff to, uh, already to a position that wasn't working. Uh, for one thing, like in the, in the, in the, uh, election room, I've been clerk for thirteen years. We haven't had air conditioning there for thirteen years for some reason, never circulate. He came in, brought in a team, and they found out what the problem was. The big boom in my office when this always happened when the, uh, I call it a big boom effect. Every time the heat, uh, either the air conditioner come on, I get a boom, you know? He brought someone in and eliminated that. It used to be freezing in the, in the, uh, in the storage room, and we were wondering why it's all the air going to the storage room. Eliminated that. Figured out what's going on in the denton room, why we don't get air there. Figured out what's going on in the, in the, in the boardroom, why is hot, cold in there. I mean, things that, that just wasn't being done. I mean, some, I wasn't getting done. He just jumping in and he just just like he's been there forever. So, uh, I, I'm really, uh, I'm really happy to have you on board, Hugo. Uh, you was highly recommended and you, I'm glad to, I'm glad to have you there.
Thank you, Leon. Appreciate it there, Kurt. And, uh, no, I've, uh, the last three months, I've been flipping over rocks and getting things done and, uh, I'm enjoying my time so far, so, uh, I'm excited to continue, uh, going in the right direction and doing great things for the township and, uh, helping out, uh, Elizabeth and the museum and, uh, the D D A and the fire stations and, uh, wherever I can, so it, uh, um, like to help others out and I like to make, well, us look good as a township, you know, facilities-wise, it's kind of my thing, so it, uh, I, I get enjoy of it when, you know, uh, making the township look good, I feel good, so it, uh, uh, everybody's happy all the way around, so it, I do like coming to work, just like Matt said, it, I really do like coming to work and, uh, putting a full eight hours in and, um, uh, doing great things, so, and I, and I appreciate that, uh, you letting me do that, you know, uh, uh, everybody, so, um, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have something like over here, it's about one more thing else happening, and one more renovation, and we, we didn't mention it because it's not in the budget. Well, it, it's kind of in the budget, it's a capital item, but it was donated to us by the, the money was given to us through the, uh, civic fund to renovate, redo the, uh, elections room. And when you come in, next time you come in, I'll let you, you guys can take a look at another job that Hugo has taken on and they are that Matt started. I had to get, I had to get the Matt. He started all this, but Hugo is taking it and continuing it. So it's, it's, I mean, it's, this is, it's looking great. When you come in, you're gonna be like, wow. I mean, it's just, it's amazing how it's transformation taking place in there and, uh, just giving us a whole new outlook on how we can storage things out. It's giving us a better functioning, functional, uh, election room to put our ballots and keep the ballots in order and keep for flow going without getting congested and bagged up. It's gonna be great. Uh, the staff is excited about it, so that, that's another project that's going on that you haven't heard about yet, but you'll see it when you come in. And that was donated by the civic fund with the help of our magnificent Treasurer Bud, that never turns me down, never get, never fails. Every time I ask for something to go through, she always, she get it, she get it, she get it through for me. I appreciate it.
She's good at twisting arms.
When you come in, look for that. I make sure you ask about it and I sure will tell you.
Yeah. This whole board is a good team, works together very well. Hey, um, we have a motion. For mailroom, and we have a second. Do we have any further questions? Hearing none, call the role, uh, uh, clerk, please.
Okay, who made that motion? Just Steve Frazier?
Yes.
Who, who?
Miller.
Trustee Miller?
That's fine, yes.
I'm sorry. Trustee Boyne?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Frazier Bud?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah. I thought we wouldn't be doing that. We just kept on going back and forth and up and down and finally got within reason. Um, uh, and let me yell, let me, I'm gonna go on for just a second and yell.
I can, I can hear you in here. Uh, so the, uh, Director Renaud, I'm gonna give her a moment. It looked like the screen share was prompting for a moment. I did have a message from her.
Okay, well, keep on going then.
Well, Director Renaud, was your screen share prompting, able to work?
We can share a screen, but usually you can share a file, and it's only letting us share off Google Drive and Dropbox, so I'm.
Oh, I see what the issue is.
It's not set up to just share off a computer, so I'm trying to troubleshoot, so just keep on moving on. Sorry about that.
We're gonna keep on moving on then. We're gonna go to number two on the new business, which is discussion and, and discussion on to consider approval of communications, I T, community services, public services, and treasury budget amendments. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we approve, discuss and approve, uh, consider approval of the communication, I T, community service, public services and treasurer budget amendments.
Support.
All right. Let's see. Got it? All right, so Director Sumter, could you speak on this matter, please?
Sure thing. Good afternoon, Board. Um, well, good evening, Board. Um, as most of you all know, and as the supervisor mentioned earlier, we are experiencing what H R calls a turnover tsunami right now. And mostly it is because of work-life balance, flexibility and better compensation. So in order for us to try to retain our current talent and attract new talent, um, we're asking that we revisit the budget, um, amendments that we have here before you. Um, mostly this is due to added responsibilities that the current employees will have to take on. Um, and other is we will also revisit the wage scale intent at a later time um, because these numbers have changed dramatically, um, from May when we first approved it, so it looks like it's gonna be more of a guideline than a rule at this point. Um, well, I'm asking, uh, for budget amendments to the community communication specialist to be increased to sixty-five thousand. The executive assistants to public services director to be increased to sixty thousand. Both the directors of public services and the water and sewer. Both the directors of public services and the water and sewer director to be, um, increased to ninety to one oh five, which we've uh, posted, um, but we possibly have someone now, so we'll talk about that in a few. Um, also, we have departments that are growing, so we need to add some additional staffing to those departments. Those departments include community services, where we want to add an executive assistance to that community services director at sixty thousand. Same as the executive assistant to public services director. We need to add an additional IT desktop technician for information technology at fifty thousand. And we are adding a treasurer specialist to the treasurer's department in the amount of fifty-four thousand three ninety at this time. With that, I'll take any questions the board may have.
We're not, we're not unique. Everybody's having these same problems. Retention has become very, very difficult. Baby boomers are retiring. Um, they held these positions for twenty years, and there is a lack of talent out there. Uh, people want to work remotely, um, oh. It's become a real, it's, it's become the major topic of discussion whenever supervisors and mayors or, or get together. I understand this is the major topic when the clerks association got together. Um, retaining talent is becoming extremely difficult, and um, we're attempting to do that. Uh, the only, the only, the, the only really new position here, uh, the executive assistant, the community services director was, is basically, we're building out a community services dr- uh, department. So we, you're going to be getting new positions. Right now, there's one person in that, that, that position, and that's Elizabeth Renault. She needs somebody to work with her, she's building a community center, rebuilding the park system. She better be the greatest administrator in the universe if she's going to do all that on her own, she needs help. Yeah, so, IT desktop technician, um, this was originally a one hundred thousand dollar request in the line item, um, to be as a contract employee. Uh, we've been begging, uh, we, we all know the problems we have with IT and uh, uh, Wi-Fi around here, especially since we are so remote. And we are becoming millennial, uh, in the fact that almost everything we got is going to apps and, and the ability to work remotely within not just our, our residents. Um, and we're getting good at it, to the point where we're actually getting rid of contract, contractors uh, that we used to have to depend upon, but uh, we do need that. Everything else here is pretty much just realignment of, of, of positions that we have, that if we wanna stay competitive, we have to keep up with the Joneses, and it, it, it just, it's just gotten this way. Took us forever to find a water and sewer director, because it's just, the, the prices just blew up.
But we found him.
We did. Good one.
Very good one.
Because we had to raise the rates quite considerably, but we found a good one.
Yep, we found one.
Water's important, we wanna take care of our residents.
It's a necessity.
For, for the discussion of this, if nobody else wants to talk about it, I'm gonna call for a vote.
Well, hang on just one minute, supervisor. I, I don't want people to think that we raised their water rates to afford. Let's be
No, no.
Our last meeting, the water rates, uh, the water rate increase for twenty-twenty-two is zero percent. Okay, uh, we're probably the only water department I know of that did not raise, that raised their water rates for next year.
Excellent, okay.
Alright, um. I, no further questions? Clerk, could you go unmute and could you please call the roll?
Yes. Refresh me on who made that motion.
Uh, I'm sorry, it was uh, Frazier, a second note.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Boyne?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Frazier Butt?
Yes.
Yes for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. My life was getting extremely difficult trying to figure out how to do these, get things done around here without people. Um, let's see, where were we? Number three, discussion on to consider approval of a job description, a personal services agreement, um, between the township, township and Todd Soms. Tom is, Tom, we are putting forward for our position of our new water and sewer director. Yes, Trustee Martin?
I make a motion that we uh, approve the job description and personal services agreement between the township and Todd Soms for the position of director of water and sewer.
Support.
Okay, who's, who's support?
I did.
Okay. I did first, but it's okay. I bow to the lady.
Okay, um, okay, uh, James Taylor and Nicole. Do I have Jim Taylor on the line, two?
He should be on.
Direct, uh, systems operator trailer is being promoted as a panelist.
Okay, thank you. And there's Todd Soms.
Yeah, they, um, alright, I'm here finally.
There you go.
Are you in Florida?
Nicole, you wanna, uh, no, that's, this is a Michigan. Would you like to, uh, to go ahead and get us started?
Yes, yes, um, again, good after, good evening, Board. I don't know why I wanna say afternoon, and it's obviously dark outside. Um, I am, um, coming to you today to consider, um, ask for you to consider the approval of the water and sewer job description and personal service agreement for Tom, Todd Soms. Um, he has a very extensive background in water. Um, he served as a laborer, so he's come from the ground up. He is currently a project manager um, at the Northwestern District Water and Sewer in Ohio. Now, don't let that fool you, he's right on the border, so he's not too far away from us, so it's not gonna take him long to get here, right, Todd? Right, okay.
Don't let a woman answer for you.
He previously served as the park supervisor, um, for the village of Cary, Ohio. He holds an associate's in applied sciences and environmental science, and a bachelor's degree in management and technology. He's currently working on his master's in public administrations at where? Ohio University?
Ohio University, yes.
Go Blue!
So, I am, um, asking that, again, we approve the job description with the slight difference. Um, with the line that we highlighted, his position will also serve as coordinated oversight of the directors of the public services director and the building and planning director. So that's the only difference in his job description. Um, so I'm asking you to approve that slight change. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to Jim and have let Jim say a couple of things, um, regarding what we've learned about Todd in the past couple of months, we've been chasing him down to get him to accept an offer here.
Well, yeah, and I'm really, I'm really pleased to bring Todd to the board, uh, recommend him highly for this position. We've worked, uh, as you know, we've all talked about this, we've worked very hard to bring water and sewer to a, a, a good place, uh, for Van Buren Township for, for now and in the future. And we built a good foundation, and now it's time to, to turn it over and someone who is a very much a twenty-first century type manager. And uh, someone that's going to lead water and sewer into the future in a very positive and strong way. So I'm, I'm very confident in Todd's abilities, uh, in my, uh, numerous conversations with him. Um, he's very well-versed on, on this business, this industry. Uh, he comes from Ohio, I don't hold that against him. But it, and it is, it's Ohio University, not the Ohio State. Get that really clear. Um, but anyways, no, Todd brings a real experience, live work experience, and, and he has personal characteristics and quality for integrity. And he's gonna do a good job for you. I have absolute confidence that he's gonna move you guys forward from where we are right now, so. Uh, with that, um, I'll give it back to Nicole, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, but I'm with that, I will take any questions at this time. Um, I would also like to allow Todd to speak if he, um, chooses to kinda introduce yourself to the board here.
Jim, I just wanna thank you for the kind words, um, I appreciate that, and, and same to Nicole. Um, I just wanna thank everyone for the opportunity, I'm, I'm very excited to get started. You have a great organization, and although I am an Ohio resident, I am a quarter mile, I'm a quarter mile from the state line, I can see it out this window, so, um, moving up that direction is, is, I, I think in, in the near future. So, I'm excited to get started, um, and, and Jim is, is left, you know, a great, uh, water and sewer department, and I'm looking forward to bringing my skills and continuing that into the future.
Welcome.
We have a good water department. Jim has left us in a very excellent place, um. And uh, Jim is gonna stay on for a little while, while we, while Todd's over here and, and help, uh, get Todd, uh, Todd Soms up to speed with whatever he needs up here. His employment agreement, you'll notice, has a two-tier. Uh, first tier is basically to take the job, and the second tier is to obtain an S-one license. His S-one license, uh, is currently in Ohio, they call it something else. He's gotta retake the test, and they don't take the test for a couple of months, so when he retakes the test, we're set. We do have another S-one license in Clip Chris Schluto, and in Todd's, Todd Soms, uh, and Jim Taylor's, uh, thing. Yeah, and, and quite frankly, it's the same with Matt Best DPS. These two departments are running like Swiss Army, Swiss watches are unbelievably good. Uh, they're, uh, uh, they're, they're not walking into disasters, they're walking into well-run, solid, um, uh, departments. So, we don't really have a problem there, so.
If I can just say, one of the things that, uh, one of the early questions to me was, okay, what's, what's the hidden deep dark secret? What's the problem? What do I gotta, what do I gotta watch out for? Where's the, the big pothole? And I was happy to tell him there are no big potholes, and uh, you know, and, and so, I, I'm glad to, to turn that over to him in that condition, so.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir, clerk.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I, I was, I was able to sit in at the second portion of this Todd interview. I think you'll do well. It's great to hear that, Mr. Taylor has gave you the seal of approval, so. With that being said, I think you're good to go, so. So, welcome, welcome aboard, I think you'll do well.
Thank you.
Through the chair. You've got big shoes to fill, big.
I'm up for the challenge.
Alright, you better be. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have someone of your caliber, and we look forward to working with you.
Treasurer Bud?
Just to say, I also sat in and had been able to talk to him previously, and um, I find him to be, uh, he's youthful, he's got a lot of spirit, and I think he'll bring a lot to the department. And likewise, he will fill big shoes, and I think Jim has left him a good place to be, so welcome aboard and, uh, hope to see you around the hall.
Trustee Miller, do you wanna say anything?
Just welcome, and you're working with the best team ever, the best township elected officials, the full-time elected officials. You will love them.
Wasn't the greatest, the greatest board of trustees in the universe?
Trustee Boynton or Martin? Welcome. Welcome.
Trustee Martin?
Uh, I'd just like to say, welcome to Van Buren Township, um. As you've already heard, we do have an excellent water and sewer department. We have our water, I have no complaints about it, the residents have no complaints about it, so. You pretty much came in with a, with a deck loaded, stacked, stacked, so you should be in good shape.
Alright, Don Boynton?
Welcome, my friend. That's all I'm gonna say right now, I think enough is said, um, but I look forward to working with you.
Likewise, thank you all.
Thank you. Not sure who set up, but I think it was the treasurer, she's uh, you're welcome here, but never in scarlet and gray.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Blue and gold only.
Alright, well, thank you, Todd. Alright, so we have a motion, and we have a, uh, we have a motion by trustee Martin, and we have a second by treasurer Bud, hearing no further comments. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Yes, trustee Martin?
Yes.
Frazier Butt?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
That's a yes for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Todd.
Welcome, Todd, to Van Buren Township. You'll have signed app, signed papers tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, we're back to Elizabeth.
I do believe, uh, we'd be able to solve our screen share, um, I, I think we had that sorted out, so based on the chairman's direction, we can either take the HR's last item, or we can be
Well, actually, yeah, we do have one more item for HR. Yeah, I'm sorry. And then number four, which would be, um, personal service agreement for a network administrator, I believe his name is John Britanniac.
Britannic.
Britannic, I was close.
Britannic, yes.
Take in a motion.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the personal civic, uh, service agreement for John Britannic to be the information technology person.
Alright.
Support.
Clerk Wright. Alright, okay, so, the Sumter.
Okay, um, this, I am asking the board to consider the approval of John Britannic's personal service agreement for the network administrator and information technology. Um, John has a bachelor's of science degree in information technology and security from Baker College with over nine years of experience as the network administrator working for Allen Park Schools. Um, John can move from troubleshooting systems and network issues to implementing, uh, enterprise-wide network. He has what Steve called the ability to not tell you what's wrong, but to keep, find a solution and keep everything moving. I will say, sitting in on the interviews, and I told the three elected officials, it was a breath of fresh air, sitting there listening to him, because he almost made IT fun for me, where I almost wanted to, you know, go into IT. I mean, he was super intelligent gentleman, very friendly, very approachable. Um, he is, he will be a breath of fresh air for the township. Um, and I'm not sure if, um, Steve Rankin is on, if he would like to add anything, because this was a late, um, notice. And again, thank you for letting me walk this on, because I, I was moving so fast trying to get him in, and Joel is leaving this week, not next week. So again, thank you for letting me put this on the agenda tonight. Um, and Steve, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
You're on mute, Steve.
Okay, alright, yeah, I just want a second, what, uh, Nicole said, the enthusiasm factor. When I looked at his resume, it just jumped out at me as far as the skill set that I'm looking for. And the big thing was to come to me with the solution or tell me a problem's fixed, not, you know, I don't know, or, or, you know, I can't think of anything else, just a never give up attitude. That's what I'm looking for, uh, it was refreshing. Um, nine years with Allen Park School District, um, and youthful. Um, so yeah, I'm looking forward to this.
Okay. I am excited to have Steve Rankin make this pick, because Steve usually thinks things out for so long. He always comes up with a great idea, but it, yeah. But, um, if Steve likes this guy, I'm not gonna second guess it one minute.
Yeah, so with that, I'll take any questions from the board at this time, if you have any.
Sounds like a winner to me.
Sounds like it. Through the chair.
Yes.
I, I don't really have any questions, but I'd like to welcome the new gentleman aboard, and I'm sure he'll do a good job. And I would like to say, uh, for Joel, he's been an asset. Um, we're all afraid to see him go, but I, I understand the drive back and forth with Jackson, and now he will be home, he does have family out there. I've had the discussion We're all ready to see him go, but I, I understand the drive back and forth with Jackson and now he will be home. He does have family out there. I've had the discussion with them. So we're happy for Joel and we certainly are happy to, happy to welcome the new guy on board.
Thank you, Treasure Bud.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion by Treasure Bud, supported by Trustee Frazier. There are no further discussion. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
I support that motion, but this.
Yeah, I thought you did too.
I'm gonna be. Change it. Go ahead.
Be eating and dreaming. But anyway. Trustee, Treasure Bud?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
You're.
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Boynton?
Yes.
Yes, for me supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you clerk. Okay, so we're going to go now back to Elizabeth Renault.
Thank you, board. Thank you for being patient. This was actually the Van Buren Township's community center's first marketing campaign. To increase the anticipation once again for the schematic design. So moderator, if you could share your screen, that would be great. Thank you.
No problem. Give me one moment. Is it, is it cheering?
Nope.
Nope.
Give me one moment.
It was on your email.
Yeah. Here we go.
Awesome. Thank you. So. Public Services Executive Assistant Tammy Doring and myself helped color this picture. We did not go to school for coloring, so we, we tried our best. So let's just jump right into it. Dan, if you can zoom in a little bit, that.
I'll do my best.
Awesome. Okay. And just go up a little bit. Okay. So to get everyone acclimated to where we're at. Of course, you're not going to see my mouse. So the diamond shape that you see to your right, that is the senior entrance. If you can go up to the right a little bit, Dan. Yes, right there. So that, that hallway right to. The top of that mouse, that's the senior entrance into the building. So that big gray rectangle on the bottom right of the screen, that's the senior dining area. So this community center will be approximately 14,000 square feet of renovation and 16,000 feet of addition. Like I said before, those are the existing senior center entrance doors and the existing parks and rec offices are in that light blue color right to the right. So all of the colored areas and we'll go through them one at a time. Those are being renovated or added on to the building. Everything in gray is not being touched as part of this project. So we'll start up at the top left in the green area. That is the current senior fitness multipurpose room now. We're adjusting a few of the walls a bit in there and reimagining the space to work for the new community center. The space will remain a senior dedicated area in the new community center. It'll have multipurpose activities for the seniors, a few exercise machines. And anything else that they would like to add there. Going down that red area, that is the first multipurpose party room classroom that we have. That will be available for a variety of programs, meetings and classes. Right down at the purple section next, that's the main locker room. And bathroom area of the, the new community center. When you walk in, there is. Sinks toilets to the back. The, the squares on the left in purple, those are the locker areas and showers. Up front, right along the hallway, it's a little bit hard to tell, but those are two universal unisex bathrooms. So we'll have sort of a family style unisex individual bathrooms. Those will have a toilet, sink and a shower in them, barrier free as well. So we're, we're going to go back up to this light blue area to the right. So these are the community services offices. So in early 2021, the seniors and parks and rec departments were restructured under one umbrella, community services. So we're combining parks and rec and the senior center offices into one area in the community center. That way we'll be able to all be together and work really cohesively. We're very excited about that. So we have five offices, one permanent workstation for our full-time account clerk. A flexible space for part-time employees. We'll have a conference room. We can also use that as a staging room for our programs. We'll have a space for kitchenette and for storage. Moving down, at the bottom of the light blue area, you'll see that rectangle shape on an angle. That is the control desk. So that is the new public entrance. If you see that. Part jutting out in brown. So that is the entrance to the, oh, yep, right there. That's the entrance to the community center. So that rectangle that's on an angle, that's the control desk. So that's what our guests are going to see when they walk into the building. There's a rail there. You see that black line that goes on an angle. That's a rail that will be able to be removable. So if there's a large event and we need a gathering space, we'll be able to remove, remove that. But on a normal day, it'll help guide. An individual coming into the center and we'll be able to make sure that we greet them and help them when they enter. So right as you walk in, you'll hit, your eyes will hit that dark blue area to the left. This is the Black Box Theater and as you walk in that large wall, we're going to be able to have the opportunity to do something really creative and, and special to welcome everyone into the community center. So that. Blue color, that's the Black Box Theater, as I said before, the Van Buren Township Downtown Development Authority has graciously donated 1.137 million dollars to make this space a reality for our community. We'll have community events, arts and cultural program and, and a lot more. It's a very flexible space. It'll feature pull-out bleacher seating, which is that all of those little rectangles squares right there. So that's pull-out bleacher seating like you would see in a high school, but it's not just flat seating. They're actually nice, comfortable seats. So it'll be really nice for different programs. There's a backstage area, which will actually be an addition. So it's that part of the square that juts out from the building, right where he has his mouse. So that is a back backstage area. We'll be able to have dressing rooms. We'll be able to have a kitchenette in case we do a catered event. I will also have an office for different community groups to share and use. For different purposes. So then we'll move sort of to the, the pink area to the right. So that is a gathering space that's at the entrance. So up top. That space is just a gathering space with a TV for guests to sit. There'll be vending machines, but at the. The bottom of that, that pink space, that's something that we're very excited about because that is the dedicated teen space that we have for the community center. The Van Buren Township Civic Fund has allocated us funds that we're very grateful for. We'll be able to build a teen area. That will have private booth style seating. It's very popular in teen areas of libraries and schools. We'll also have some spaces for computer space, different video games, all sorts of good stuff like that. So then to the left, across the main hallway, you'll see another multipurpose room, which is the red area. That room will be attached to a room for a younger crowd. We'll be able to rent a room for a birthday party and have different kid activities in that. In that area there, we're looking at potentially doing some sort of roll-up or barn door. That connects the party room to the, to the kid area to make it feel like one space or we can make it feel like two spaces. So it's a lot of, a lot of multipurpose. That's the key word of this community center for sure. So moving down that large brown rectangle, that's storage, which if you ask Director Zangline, I think that might be her favorite part of the community center is the storage. The purple color next to that, those are two bathrooms as well. So we have another individual bathroom, two of them right there. The rooms right to the right of that, that's a janitor closet and electric mechanical room. The lime green area to the left, that's our. I'm sorry. The, the lime green area to the right, that's our main fitness area with the machines. We wanted to create a really cool visual space that gave character to the outside of the building. So we're planning on doing a rounded shape with some glass to let natural light in. And allow people exercising to see outside. This space will also have some, some lockers. As well and we'll, when we're finished with this, we'll show sort of a rendering and you'll be able to get a better idea for that. To the, to the left, that left lime green square, that is the fitness area that's very multipurpose. It will have mirrors. It will be able to look outside. We'll do a lot of fitness classes, dance classes, any sort of things like that. Moving down, that's more storage. And then that space that has the black X in it, that's the elevator and the stairwell that takes you up to the mezzanine, which is where we have the walking track. So you'll go up either the stairs or the elevator and there will be a walking track. And if you follow those dotted lines that are in the gym. That kind of go around the gym and curve on the edges, that's the outline of where the walking track will be, but it will be on a, a second level. And then of course, the yellow area is our full-size gym. It's able to be split with a curtain down the middle. So we'll be able to have a lot of different activities. Again, a lot of multipurpose space. Outside, behind the building, there will be a large outdoor patio space and event space that will be able to have gatherings, concerts, movies, all sorts of. Different programming like that. That and the other landscaping and site work is still being developed currently and we'll bring that back during more detailed design development. So if you could scroll down moderator and we might have to flip it. This just shows a rendering. It's a really rough rendering. Once we get into detailed design work, we'll have much more detailed ones, but this is that front entrance. The designers really wanted to work off the style guide, the brand guide that the communications department has developed. We are. Using that same wave look that we have on a lot of the gateway signs, our electronic message sign. And try to make it feel really open and inviting. Over to the left. That's that rounded fitness area and that black area is going to be glass. So that will look really, really nice. And then if you scroll down one more. Probably have to zoom out a little bit.
Bear with me folks, I'm, we had to use the browser which had the entirety of the packet on here. So we might've lost, might've lost my space here.
You're doing a great job.
I'm, I'm trying to. This before, so.
I think keep going up, Dan. Okay. And here we can see, so right along the right side, that's Tyler Road. And so you can kind of see the outline of where the addition will be. If you look at right where it says existing building, that's where the gym is now. So you can kind of see where. Where we'll be adjusting to. So the end of the building, the end of the addition will be about halfway through the senior activity garden and then the outdoor space will be probably closer down where the. Baseball field is now. And then we're looking at doing some trails connecting to Cork Park and lots of other outdoor amenities. So those are the spark notes. Is there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Elizabeth, can you point out where the splash pad is on, on this and how it ties in?
Yeah, absolutely. So it would be kind of at the bottom left of your screen. It's not even really shown on that page, maybe in the middle. And so like I said, we're going to look at some trails that can connect from our outdoor amenity space into Cork Park to make it really feel like a seamless. Transition, transition between the two spaces.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. And I liked that we all could go in. A few at a time, one at a time and sit down and meet with the architect and you and also Tammy. And get our concerns or questions, you know, any revisions, any suggestions that we had. You were great in implementing all of that, which was a quite a job.
Thank you. I appreciate you making time for us.
Director, do you want me to continue to share?
Does anyone have any specific questions at spaces they'd like to look at? Otherwise I think we can be done.
Seeing.
Sounds like we can close it. So we're not looking for any sort of formal action tonight. This was just an informal presentation like the one that we made at Recreation Committee. Like I stated earlier. We're going to move into the estimating phase and the detailed design development, which we'll get to pick out much more of the details. We'll get much more detailed renderings that are exciting to look at. So we'll be bringing that back to the board as well.
All right. Can you go over the timeline that you have proposed that we're on?
Yep. So we are working on again estimating the detailed design development right now through the end of the year. We're looking at potentially doing a steel bid at the beginning of next year, along with the rest of the bids in early spring. Groundbreaking, late spring, and then about 12 to 14 months after that, we should hopefully be wrapping up the project. So.
All right. Any other questions?
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience with the screen sharing.
Is this posted anywhere so somebody coming to our website can look at it?
Currently it's only posted in the board packet right now. The reason that we're not posting it necessarily to the department webpage is that this schematic design could potentially change through the estimating phase. Once we, once we get a better estimate, we might have to look at value engineering, might have to look at moving a few spaces. So it's really still flexible.
All right. Yeah. Cause everything that looks good on paper doesn't sometimes look good when you bid it out. So just to warn the public of that. I have no questions. Does anybody else have a question? No. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
We're going to move on. I believe our next item is Bud, is the reports. And then your report, you have your budget reports of May, June, July and August of 2021. We are now into public comment for knowledge and items. Is there anybody for the public that wishes to comment on pretty much anything they want to talk about?
Thank you supervisors. For my show of hands, you can please use your virtual hand raising if you would like to make any comment. And while you're doing that, I'm going to read the comments that were left in chat as part of the public comment. From Systems Operator Jim Taylor, he seconded the statement that ER Elizabeth Renault is the greatest. Former Director Bass said, I second the statement that the Board of Trustees is the greatest. Director Zangline, Director Zangline said, welcome Director Psom's. And the new Director Psom's said back, thank you all. I'm very excited to get started. I'm looking forward to working with such a great group and community. See you all on November 8. Trustee Boynton gave a thumbs up and Director Zangline says, I'm so excited for all of these special rooms and spaces. So I'm going, so the chat is still available for anybody in the comment who would like to make any, any other extra comment. But for a public comment goes, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak during public comment, please raise your virtual hand and I'll be able to unmute you. Not seeing any virtual hands raised at this time. Chairman, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised this time.
All right. Are there any board comments for any knowledge agenda, for any comments? Any board comments say? Hearing none, I've been doing a German. Can I get a motion?
Don't move.
Support.
Boynton and who was the support?
Miller.
Miller, okay. So I have a motion. I have support here. Miller, okay. So I have a motion. I have support hearing nobody against it. We are calling an adjournment. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye, buddy.
Good evening.